Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. It's 9:30 AM on this Friday, June 19th. My name is Dana Zorden and I'm a member of the county's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual budget information session. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to do a quick roll call to ensure we have adequate communications for each commissioner. Commissioner Eggers.
Good morning Dana, I'm here.
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Wong. Commissioner Wong.
I'm sorry, I didn't have my button unmuted, but I'm here.
That's alright. Loud and clear, great, thanks. Commissioner Justice.
Good morning Dana.
Good morning, sir. Commissioner Peters.
Morning Dana.
Good morning Commissioner. Good morning Commissioner Gerard.
I'm here, good morning.
Great. Commissioner Welch. Alright, we don't have a Welch, but how about Commissioner Seal?
I'm here Dana.
Alright, perfect. Mr. Administrator, I'll now turn the meeting over to you.
Good morning Commissioners. So on Friday, we have six, I'm getting feedback from counterpart here. We have six more budget meetings today, budget information sessions. First up is the State's Attorney and Adam, are you, well, we'll start with our budget analyst with, which is Jim Abernathy. But is, Adam, are you, are you here or is Mr. McCabe here?
Yes, Mr. Burton, I'm appearing for Mr. McCabe today.
Okay, great, so we'll start out with Jim Abernathy.
Thank you.
Morning Jim.
Good morning Commissioners. My name's Jim Abernathy, I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. And I am the budget analyst for the State Attorney. I'm going to, I'll share the screen. Okay, so the, the budget for the State Attorney in their FY21 request is, as you can see, compared to the overall budget, it's a very small percentage of their overall budget. Their FY21 request is for $287,020. And what their county portion of the budget covers is the technology needs of the State Attorney. The total expenses for the State Attorney decreased by $66,310, which is 18.8% of the FY20 budget. It's broken down by operating, which has shown a decrease of just, just under $101,000. The main cause for this decrease is last year, they replaced 200 more monitors for their computers than they need to replace this year. And they've also are replacing 100 fewer UPS, which are the power supplies for their computers and laptops. On the capital outlay, which for them would be computer-related items that are $1,000 or above. And last year, they had zero in the budget and this year, they're requesting just under $35,000. And that is for, they need 32 new laptops and a couple other technical items. They are partially funded by dedicated revenue, which is the document recording fee. And their percentage of support by the document recording fee with the FY21 request is approximately 65%. The remaining 35% comes from other general fund revenues. That is my budget report for the State Attorney and I will turn it over to Mr. Ross. Would you like me to unshare the screen?
That, that's fine, Mr. Robert, thank you and thank you for that detailed report, you made my job very easy this morning. I just first want to start off and say good morning to everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our budget. Mr. McCabe generally, as you can see from the pie charts from the shared screen, gets most of his budget from the state of Florida. A small IT portion comes from Pinellas and Pasco Counties. Most of, as Mr. Abernathy said, of the money that we're requesting is for routine maintenance and upkeep of machines that are used in the normal, in any normal law practice. And we are asking for some replacement laptops and capital outlays, a little under $35,000. But that is all pursuant to BTS's replacement plan. And I, I also see here that we're, we are still paying for all the rent for our child, child welfare, legal services and phone costs to the county, we reimburse every year and we still do all the county ordinances and violations as part of our normal duties as well.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I think, and I'm assuming we go first because we're probably the easiest one for the day.
So far, yeah. Okay, no questions, thank you very much.
Great, okay, so next up, Jim will be back on with Judge Rondelino and-
Thank you all very much, have a great day.
Thank you. He'll be on next with Judge Rondelino for the judiciary.
Good morning. Good morning again Commissioners, Jim Abernathy, Office of Management and Budget. I am also the budget analyst for the judiciary, so I will pull up their, their document. The, just like the State Attorney, the budget for the judiciary is partially funded by dedicated revenue with approximately 62% of their budget coming from court fees that are collected by the, by the clerk. The remaining 37.8% comes from general fund revenues and also, which includes grant revenues for some of their programs. And this, this pie chart shows all the various programs that the judiciary's budget covers, the county portion. The biggest portion being court technology. The, the judiciary gets a, a target for their budget each year on a, just a portion of their overall budget requests. And this year, they, they were $2,040 or about 0.6% below the target. And that target covers the court county statutory requirements, which is in the bottom right-hand corner, about 5 o'clock on the pie chart. So each year, they, we give them a target for that and this year-
Jim, you went muted.
Yeah.
Jim, you're not showing you-
Okay, sorry.
You lost.
Gotcha.
You're, you're back?
Yes, I am back, I'm back. So the, the courts, other programs are Law Library, Drug Court, Behavior Evaluation, Juvenile Arbitration, Teen Court, and then Court Technology. So overall, their budget request is for $5.1 million, which is 5.2% higher than their FY20 budget. They are adding a, one, or just under one FTE in FY21. This position was actually added in FY20 during the year, but this is a grant-funded position for, that they get from the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. This is a five-year grant, it's called the Thrive Grant and it is worth about $2 million. So that position is, is paid for by the grant. The operating expenses increased about 10% to $872,000. And it is, in there is mostly technology increases for replacement printers, which, and computers, which are part of the BTS PC replacement plan. Their capital outlays are increasing by 5.7% to $381,000. And again, this is mainly the technology part of their, their budget for video conferencing equipment, presentation equipment, laptop servers, those types of items. As I said, the, their budget is partially supported by court fees and their, the dedicated revenue in FY21 covers approximately 62% of their budget request. The remaining 37.8% is, is covered by other general fund revenues, which includes, as I said earlier, the various grants that they receive. They're, they're non, other than technology, most of their programs are very flat from year to year. They do a very good job of staying within the funds that we provide them. And when they do ask for additional funding, it is usually backed up by grants to provide other programs. So I'm going to turn it over to the Chief Judge now for his remarks.
Thank you very much and good morning all. I hope everyone is staying safe in these difficult times. As you all know from years past, we continue to be very conservative in our approach to the budget. Coming in under our targets, a lot of the increases that do appear are, are driven by other factors such as the BTS upgrades that have to be done. As you know, from those of you who are on the Business Technology Services Board, we have programs in place to replace equipment on a regular scheduled basis. Another contributing factor to those increases that are really out of our control are the, the subscription upgrades that have to be done. Additionally, the, there are added costs with the personnel, county personnel receiving additional pay. So our personnel that are paid by the county kind of tag along with, with that. So all in all, I think we're, we're really flat-lined, if not a little bit under in these difficult times. So once again, thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, do we have any questions for Judge Rondelino? Okay, well, thank you. Next up is Public Defender's Office.
And we still, still on deck is Jim Abernathy and he'll cover that and then we can have comments from Mr. Dillinger.
Yep, you still have not gotten rid of me yet, so again, Jim Abernathy with the Office of Management and Budget. The, or the, the budget for the Public Defender's Office. First off, the, their request came in at $1.3 million, which is a decrease from FY20. But most of that decrease ties back to their decision package that was submitted. They, for the last couple of years, they've had two juvenile crossover case managers that the board has funded on a yearly, for a yearly at a time to, to see how the project is going. So when they submit their budget, they did not include the funding for this item. They've requested again in FY21, $150,470 to continue with these crossover case managers, which support juvenile offenders transitioning out of foster care. These positions were added originally in FY18 as a pilot. They, due to many factors, they weren't able to fund, or fill those positions right away and did not get a good set of data until about a year after that. So they were able to make, or to continue that in FY19 and FY20. And they will talk about those results later, but they've been pleased with the results of those positions. These positions are their state FTE, so they will not show up in county FTE count, but the county reimburses the state for those positions. The, the portion of the FY21 budget request is funded from document recording fees of about $186,000. The remaining support comes directly from general fund revenue. So the, the other revenue support, about 86% of their request. They do have a target on part of their budget and they came in $73,000, which is about 6% below that target. And we only apply this target to the jail diversion, incompetent proceeding, ready-to-life programs within their budget. So here's a, a chart for showing the breakout of their funding by program. So as you can see, the jail diversion makes up 61% of their budget, just over $810,000. The technology program is about 180,000 or 13% of their budget. And then the other three programs make up the remaining 26%. So the, their operating is decreasing by $189,000 to $1.3 million. Part of their operating covers the computers, computer replacements and jail diversion programs and the ready-for-life therapist and two incompetent to proceed therapists as well. This is also where you, where the public defenders of juvenile crossover case manager positions would be budgeted. So if that was included, then they would be much closer to their FY20 budget. So the, just again, the juvenile crossover case managers is about a $150,000 request for their FY21 budget. Capital outlay is decreasing by almost 82%. It's due to just the scheduled replacement from BTS for their PCs. This just happens to be a year that is much lower than last year. So this, this tends to swing every few years up and down, so that is my summary of the, of their budget. I will turn it over to Mr. Dillinger.
Good morning.
Morning.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you, it will be the last time I do address you all. As indicated, our overall decrease is 18.7%. I do want to talk about some of the programs that you all are funding. The decision packages, the two crossover case managers. That came about because of the incredible turnover rate that Eckerd was having with case managers in the foster care system, which at the time was 100%. It did take a while to find the right people, in my opinion, to be in this slot. They have now been with us 26 months. I have provided the statistics for what they do and the number of children that they see and what they do with the children. And we have certainly served those children well, certainly much better than what was being done in the past. I think if you ask the judiciary if they would prefer our case managers versus what they see on a daily basis elsewhere, they much prefer ours. So that's the only decision package there. I would hope that that would continue. We were also awarded a reinvestment grant for the same type of program for crossover children in conjunction with Ready for Life. That's been postponed for three months for variety reasons. Number one, it was very difficult to interview those positions with this, with COVID-19 going on. And it also was postponed because despite the memos we were receiving from the state that we were in good shape because of budget reserves and federal money, we were notified this week that we would be cut 6% in our state budget, which is $1.08 million to me. And I say that because the reinvestment grant requires a $400,000 match. So I'm not sure where we are financially with that, but I think that makes these two case managers even more important to us. I also want to talk a little bit about jail diversion. That's been funded, was funded initially by the federal government in 2004. The county picked it up in 2007. Last year, we provided the data that we diverted from the Pinellas County Jail 756 mentally ill clients who previously had had over 6,470 arrests. After being treated in our program, they had 277 arrests, which is a 96% decrease in arrests. Obviously, that relieves the jail problems and it also lets them go about having a normal life. We also have what in public is called the Recovery Program, which, but on budget-wise, it's the chronic inebriate, which are those people who are homeless and chronically addicted primarily to alcohol. And as you can see, we did 50 of those folks who previously had been arrested 312 times. After they went through the CI program, they had 20 arrests, which was a 94% decrease. Almost every one of those people are either employed or have received their benefits. And what we have found, that once they truly have been treated for their addiction and then we address their health issues, they don't come back into the criminal justice system. So the county has been very supportive of these programs. They've had very positive results, not only on the jail population, but on the humans that we serve. And I would hope that the decision package on the children that were not being very well-served by our current provider would be served by us. And those case managers, like I said, have stayed with us now, this would be 26 months. And they, they go above and beyond what is needed to assist these children. So as indicated, our overall request is down 18.7%. We certainly want to be fiscally conservative, but we also, there are many needs that need to be met simply primarily because the state of Florida is not meeting them. And unfortunately, they need, those needs must be met and we are meeting those needs ourselves. So we're certainly open to any questions, be happy to talk about jail diversion, which we are one of the few in the state that has such a program. The recovery program for the chronic. We, we get to do a lot to help people stay out of the criminal justice system. And that would be my goal, is to have fewer and fewer people in the criminal justice system because of either addiction or mental health issues. So I'm open to questions and be happy to answer anything and again- I've been very supportive of the Public Defender's Office and I've really enjoyed working with the county and the commission the past 24 years. So again, any questions, please contact me or let me know right now. And I'll switch to the beach background if that's more appropriate than the Golden Gate Bridge.
Gotta love it. You, Mr. Dillinger.
I'm sorry.
I said, we're gonna miss you, done an incredible job.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I simply just wanted to thank Bob for his service and wish him Godspeed on the next adventure.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seal.
And I wanted to echo that, Bob, you have been a phenomenal leader, very cutting-edge, always working to help those in need, you know, starting programs such as the jail diversion program and these crossover case managers and ready-for-life, helping them. You have just put your heart and soul into improving lives, so thank you very, very much.
Thank you Commissioner.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, I want to especially thank you today for not only your 24 years of service, but the incredible passion that you have had for so long to take care of our children and feed the hungry kids in our county. That has been something that has really touched my heart. I think we're all very grateful and the county is a better place for your work. You are so kind and so easy to work with when I worked with you in the legislature and I really, really appreciate your demeanor and the way in which you tackle your problems. So thank you very much, you have enormously big shoes to follow.
Thank you Commissioner, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Before we leave, I just wanted to mention that we do have a Article 5 presentation that is an informational granicus item that summarizes the, the various parts of the Article 5 funding by the county that, that is available out there for you to, to reference as well.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Medical Examiner.
Alright, now we shift to Bob and then to Dr. Fogmart.
Good morning Commissioners, my name is Sam Mello, I'm with the Office of Management and Budget. Analyst for the District 6 Medical Examiner's Office. With us today is Dr. Dutton Dogmorton, Chief Medical Examiner. Good morning, Dr. Fogmart.
Good morning.
Okay, so as you know, the Medical Examiner's Office provides both forensic and medicine services and forensic laboratory services, Pinellas County on a contractual basis. Oops, sorry, let me share my screen, I'm sorry. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so revenues are expected to remain constant, totaling just over $1.5 million. The two largest sources of funds for the medical examiner are the fees for medical examiner services and the amount of $395,000. The other large revenue source is other fees and charges. This category also includes the memorandum of understanding agreement with Pasco County for the use of- This category also includes the uh membrane of of understanding agreement with Pasco County for the use of the ME building. The revenues for that account are expected to be four hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, the total expenditures for the medical examiner are increasing by sorry. The total expenditures for the medical examiner are increasing by one hundred and sixty two thousand dollars or two point four percent for FY twenty one. Uh, this this change is largely driven by the increase in operating expenditures. The of three hundred and two thousand dollars. Within this expenditure category, we have the professional services uh medical examiner contract, which reflects an increase of one hundred and forty seven thousand, one hundred dollars due to mainly due to payroll expenditures. The FY, the uh contract currently supports sixty seven physicians. The operating expenditures, uh non-contract, have an net increase of a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, mainly due to lab operating supplies and equipment calibration. Capital expenditures has a decrease of one hundred and forty four thousand dollars related to on-time software purchases and machine and equipment costs. Total general fund support for the for the medical examiner operations, net of all revenue sources, is five point seven million dollars. Some of the, some potential threats are things that we need to look at going forward. Currently, there's an interlocal agreement with Pasco County for the use of the medical examiner facility that is set to expire um on September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Currently, the revenue associated with that is just over four hundred thousand dollars a year. Just a little background on that, uh when the ME facility was being constructed, Pasco was given or uh given two options, one to provide a lump sum amount upfront or to pay as they go um based upon the number of autopsies ever performed. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Thogmorton. And Dr. Thogmorton, if I'm not mistaken, um your anniversary is this November. Uh, I think you're muted.
Yeah.
Yes, it's December first is the anniversary. It'll be twenty years.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Well, it's kind of weird for me to um do a presentation without a PowerPoint, so you know, I don't really have a script. But um all I can say is a couple of things to take note. You may want to know about COVID nineteen. As of yesterday, we had a hundred and eighteen deaths that we've certified from COVID nineteen. Most every one of them were in a uh like a care facility, a care home, nursing home. Not very many, probably about last I looked, thirteen or so were actual not in a care home. So we're on the beginning of the of the wave. I'm, we've been watching it a bit, and um we are way ahead on cases. In fact, as of June first, we're about twenty five percent ahead of any other year. And last year, two thousand and nineteen, was our busiest year. Currently, for calendar year twenty twenty, we are about three hundred and fifty cases ahead. Now, yes, we've got, at the time I measured that, we were about a hundred COVID nineteen cases. So that's a hundred of the three fifty. The remainder, if you can imagine, five months, five completed months of twenty twenty, and we have an extra, not counting COVID. We have two hundred and fifty extra cases, and that's with a lockdown, with the decrease of traffic deaths because of the lockdown. We really had a decrease of traffic deaths and other traumatic deaths. What we're seeing is just fentanyl, tons and tons of fentanyl deaths. Uh, it's worse than the the pill mill crisis, worst thing I've ever seen. We we usually have, let's say, total medical examiner cases, maybe twenty two hundred a year. Last year, our busiest year, we had twenty three hundred and sixty seven bodies that we certified. This year, we're on pace, if this keeps up, we'll be in the three thousand, one hundred, thirty two hundred range, if this keeps up. So our workload is up total about twenty five percent. But we're doing okay. We've made adjustments, and everybody's just really grinding it out pretty hard, and I think we're okay. And not my original budget submission, you know, and calculations, I think we can stand by those. I think we'll be doing just fine.
Well, that's grim news. Commissioner Long. You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Dr. Thogmorton, for your very comprehensive overview. My question is, of the uptick in deaths from fentanyl, is that primarily young people?
It's um across the board. It's not just young people. I think the, I get people that are in their sixties. I had a seventy year old. Most of them, I would say, are between the ages of uh in their twenties all the way up into their fifties. And it's no longer, we don't have the weird fentinals anymore. We have, we don't have the curano fentanyl and the car fentanyl. We just, right now, we're getting just pure fentanyl with a lot of times methamphetamine mixed with it. And it's just over and over and over again. Uh, I've never seen anything like it.
Is that both here and in Pasco?
Yes, Pasco is uh really ahead. They are getting crushed by it as well.
Anybody else?
Your seal. So I'm just curious, because obviously you're doing the autopsies for the COVID. How are you doing with social distancing and with protecting you and your staff?
It's funny. This is a really funny story. I'm a scientist, so I read the literature. I read the core literature. I read all about SARS-CoV- one, MERS, all of them. And since uh I just applied what I knew about viruses in this one from what I could glean from, you know, the limited information we had in February, and I've been digging into it. My employees will attest that pretty much if you ask me something about the virus, I'd probably be able to answer it. And they thought, oh, I was kind of nuts. In early March, I said masks for everyone, because everybody in my office, you guys are wearing masks. Some sort of face covering, don't come to work. If you don't want to wear masks, don't come to work. What I was fearful of was someone in the office getting the infection and being indoors out of UV light, uh because UV light seems to be, you know, this thing doesn't have any sunblock. It doesn't, this, its RNA genome doesn't seem to like UV, UV light. That's why outside transmission is extremely rare, if ever documented. I think there was one case documented in Korea, and I think that was two dudes shouting at each other's faces. The um started up with the masks. I was worried that if somebody in a section like DNA or toxicology or chemistry was to get the virus, I would have to close down that section, and I wouldn't have any chemists. It's not like I can just go out and put an ad in the paper and get more forensic chemists. So it was, people are wearing the masks here since early March to to keep their mucous, mucus droplets to themselves. We're not wearing N ninety fives. We're wearing mostly homemade cloth, multi-layered masks, and we've been very fortunate. Uh, it was funny, some of the other folks around probably thought I was nuts, but I bet you they don't think I'm nuts anymore.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Peters.
Hi, I just want to commend your staff. I think you all have been doing an amazing job. I I look forward to Rita's report every single time on the on the overdose deaths. I I've heard on the street that the fentanyl that we're finding now that has created this unbelievable rush in the ER and our nine on one calls, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, and it may be too soon. But it's, I I'm hearing that they're mixing it with some kind of heart medication, and it's causing the heart rhythms to go crazy. And I know you're not seeing them in the ER, you're seeing them after the fact. But is that what you're seeing, or do you know what that is at this point, or is it too soon?
Hang on, I'll ask Rita. She's sitting right here. Heartmed?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we're not seeing that. We see with cocaine sometimes, but not fentanyl yet. And she's getting actually the C's drugs and doing an analysis. So her information, at least locally, would probably be the most accurate.
Okay, so so uh so some firefighters have informed me of that, as well as a CEO of an uh hospital. So whatever this is, is doing funky things with the rhythm of the heart, and it's taking four to five Narcan's to to bring them back to life. So so if you haven't seen it yet, I know it's coming.
It it may be.
Rita, I look forward to your next report.
It may be the combination of the fentanyl with the methamphetamine. We've had just, that's incredible, incredible amounts of um those two together. It's like the old fashioned speedball heroin and and cocaine, but we're doing fentanyl and meth. And pharmacologically, it'd be like the new twenty first century speedball for everybody, I guess.
Wow. Well, I want to thank you all for the work you do. It's very impressive, and you've got some really amazing staff. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I have one more uh question for Dr. Thogmorton, because I'm sure he realizes that on Tuesday we are going to be making some, where did you go? I don't see you anymore. Are you still there?
He's there.
Okay, well, we have some incredibly difficult decisions to make on Tuesday. And in reading through my emails and correspondence and text messages, I'd be curious what your message might be, Dr. Thod Martin, to those people who have such an aversion to wearing masks and think that it's a trampling on their individual rights. Do you have any response for that that might help us out a bit, since you are a scientist?
The uh, I can understand that. My wife is a little bit feeling that a little bit. She doesn't like to be told what to do. Nobody does. I mean, we're a constitutional republic, you know? But the uh, quite frankly, the virus doesn't care. It doesn't care. And um if we do not keep our own mucus droplets to ourself, what appears that the touching and the everybody's cleaning and doing their hands, and that's awesome, but that seems to be an extremely unlikely way of getting this. It's all mucus droplets going into somebody else's respiratory tract, mouth, face. So we can't shut, in my opinion, this is me going off on non-tendence, but uh uh monetarily, I don't think we can shut down the economy. I think it crushes people. But at the same time, you've got to do something to create a barrier between people. And if it can't be distance, it needs to be something to trap people's mucus droplets and keep it to themselves. And if people just understood that, but I can understand the confusion. I mean, I think the World Health Organization and the Centers for Disease Control, their messaging has been terrible. They say one thing, masks don't work. Now they're saying masks work. I knew from just reading the literature and watching the uh countries in Asia like, you know, Korea, Hong Kong, Japan, and what they've done, masks work. And if you, you're not protecting yourself from the virus when you wear a cheap face covering, you are protecting others from your infected mucus. That's what it's about. You're keeping your mucus to yourself. And I, that's what I tell people when they ask if they want, that's what I told my employees when they asked. And uh I got really no pushback at all, because I think most of the people under my roof are scientists, and they understand science. It just needs to be more education about it, and maybe some, look, you're not protecting yourself when you wear it. You're protecting others. Think about your fellow man, I guess. But I think it would work. You could uh, we could beat this thing if we had that kind of culture like some of the Asian countries.
I appreciate your candor, Dr. Thogmorton, as always. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Doctor. That is helpful. Uh, Commissioner Seal.
I, yes, um so Barry and Dr. Thogmorton could, I would suggest that we film Dr. Thogmorton's message as part of our PR campaign. And um I think it carries a lot of weight coming from the medical examiner, who knows the science and why people are dying. And also, um if he could also attend virtually our meeting on Tuesday when we talk about the masks, I would really.
That's a great idea.
Dr. Thod Martin, that would be at two o'clock on Tuesday. Would you be available?
Yeah.
Okay, so well, this, and this is what the Commissioners will be discussing, discussing additional regulatory requirements. So that's uh the context uh for that. We can certainly hook you up with our Barbara Hernandez, who is working with the regional PIOs on the messaging um and trying to educate and um modify behavior um out in the community. And they're coming at that from a number of different ways, um including using sports figures and things like that. But having a doctor, um a medical examiner um angle to that would would be another way in which trying to in influence that behavior. So we'll uh, we'll have them reach out to you and and see if we can um include you into that, if that's okay.
Okay.
And happy twentieth anniversary, and thank you so much for all your work. And then I do have one question. So in the um potential threats, you mentioned the Pasco contract expires in September thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Is there a movement by Pasco to build their own center?
No, there's not. Um, the um, I mean, obviously, the, they're paying you guys, I guess, kind of like um you're paying like eight hundred and change per autopsy. And then you're getting, uh for every day a body is stored here, you're getting ten dollars for the cooler space. Obviously, their payment on the mortgage is going to end twenty twenty two. But obviously, if you are still living in the house, it makes sense to pay some sort of uh maintenance fee. You know, you're still paying the, you can't go with, as of twenty twenty two, you can't go with no payment. So there needs to be some sort of, somewhere between zero dollars and eight hundred and something dollars would be an equitable payment. So you've got to understand, they they paid your your capital cost, but uh part of that is um just paying for using the building. So you guys come up with that. They have not approached me in any way about building one. If they did, um of course, we would, okay, you know, and I would say this was, this would work or not, you know? I just would um, it's a big endeavor. From a operational standpoint, I don't think that it's going to be cost effective for them to build their own facility right now. I think it will cost them much, much, much more than even what they're paying now. But again, they're not getting the level of service that you are. The agencies, the funeral homes, all have to drive down here to work with us. So they're paying per capita slightly less than you guys, but again, they're getting much less service than you guys. Much less, you know, much less timely service and the inconvenience. But you know, they just, I guess their taxpayers would have to decide. But certainly, if they wanted to build a satellite office up there, we would man it just like the state attorney does and the public defender does. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Thogmorton? All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you on Tuesday, Tuesday.
Okay, okay, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not, by the way, looking forward to it. Next up, um.
Next up is the Department of Health, so Don is still on, and Dr. Cho.
Morning, Dr. Cho. Um, let me go ahead and share my screen. Everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, um so the the um, for the Department of Health, the current mileage read approved by the Board of County Commissioners is zero eight three five point zero eight three five mils. The maximum mileage um cap is point five mils. The revenue for this fund is provided through the collection of countywide adware and tax dedicated to support uh the Florida Department of Health operations in Pinellas County. Um, the, let me scroll down here. But the uh the adware revenues for the Department of Health total seven point two million dollars, which is an increase of four hundred and ninety one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, or seven point three percent when looking at FY twenty. The fund balance increase of five hundred and eighty three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars, or fifty four percent. This needs to higher than anticipated collections, and per state statute, we budget ninety five percent. So the remaining receipts go to fund balance. The, the total requirements for the Department of Health for FY21 totals $9 million, which is roughly a $1.1 million increase over FY20. Operating expenditures reflect a decrease of $12,000. The decrease is due to a reduction in the county's annual risk allocation expense. Grants and aids, uh, which is the largest category. Uh, and that reflects the payments that we make to the health department. Uh, the increase is $830,000 or 13.2%. This includes uh, two items, the core services funding, which is $5.5 million. And reflects an increase of $750,000 or 15.7% over FY20. Included in this is a, is our expenditures for a roof replacement and general grid replacement at the Pennels Park locations. Uh, these were anticipated and reserves were built to provide funding for this. Um, in, along with, in this category is also salary and benefit increases of $240,000. School nurse funding, totaling $1.5 million is also included here. This reflects an increase of approximately $80,000 or 5.4%. This is the, matched the COLA, anticipated COLA for the school board. A final adjustment will be, will be made when the actual figures are provided. Apologies. The um, reserves are anticipated to increase 302,000 or 23.2% resulting in a total reserve of $1.6 million. Estimated total expenditures for the Department of Health total budget from all sources this year is anticipated to be $57.8 million. So the funding from our fund which is 7.1 million is roughly 12% of that total. Fund bound, fund balancing increase of 583,000 is due to higher than anticipated earnings and per state statute, which I mentioned before, my apologies. Wish I'll turn it over to Dr. Cho. For additional comments.
Good morning, everybody. Um, nice to see everyone again. Um, uh, really proud of the work we do at, here at the Health Department. I, I know we've been here and the, really the focus of it has been COVID, but we do provide 1.3 million services annually. Uh, and we have a wide range of services. That's what I, I really appreciate about public health. Really touching um, the different services out there, filling some of the gaps, increasing access to things like primary care, making sure uh, people get um, treatments for incomprehensible diseases, or environmental health services. Um, obviously, uh, as you're probably aware, we focused on COVID over the last few months. Uh, and currently, we have 150 staff, uh, more than 150 staff dedicated to some of those response efforts. Uh, keeping in mind that, as I've mentioned on previous calls, this is going to be a prolonged operation. Uh, beyond COVID, I, I do want to uh, sort of highlight another program that has been a focus of, of ours over the last few years, which is that Nurse in Every School Initiative. And again, thank you uh, to the Board of County Commission for all your supports uh, for, for years, even before my time. Uh, but with the, with that kind of support, keeping in mind, we're in the fourth out of the five-year plan to get that nurse in every school. Uh, and just as an update, as the end of last year, there was 103 of the 125 uh, schools uh, had a full-time staff or nurse. Uh, there, one of the programs, the comprehensive programs is a little different than that nurse model, uh, which encompasses five, five, six schools. And for next year, what the school board is planning to do um, is that um uh, currently, they're using the RNs to supervise the LPNs, but just given the, the, the issues that may come up with COVID, they're planning to put these nursing supervisors into the schools. So uh, there will, for next year, um, be a nurse in every school. Um, uh, and I think in terms, when we're talking about reopening with the schools, I think that's vital. And I, I think uh, that puts us at an advantage as we talk about school reopenings in the time of COVID. Uh, something that the majority of the counties and the state really uh, do not have the same access to. So, so again, thank you for your um, support of that. Um, uh, some of the ass includes, as that was went over, includes uh, some additional dollars um, uh, with the nurses uh, for to, to do, to match the COLA. Uh, and I think the majority of the other costs are capital improvements. Um, I also do have my business manager and administrative service program director, uh, Pravinder Burke on the call as well. For any additional questions, I, I may not be able to answer.
Commissioner Jess.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think um, uh, that school nurse numbers are really interesting and, and um, you sent me something, I think it was probably a year ago now, that probably the board would find very useful if you have updated numbers about uh, the number of referrals that these nurses are making in schools and those kind of things. Um, kind of get to feel for the impact that uh, the, what, the impact of the services, but also that ripple thing about mental health services and referrals and, and all those things that play into the um, more than just a, a student with a, a cold, but all the other ripple effects that that, having a nurse in every school, uh, um, the impacts in there. So um, I think that kind of information is really helpful as we go out and talk to folks about some of the things we've done for uh, schools and nursing.
Okay, and I can send that to you, uh, just keeping in mind that it probably will be skewed for the last school year. I think they had to cut it short. So in terms of number of services, but we can, uh, I'll have my team put that together and send that to you.
Thank you.
That would be great. Thank you. Well, and before we go, Dr. Cho, I just wanted to say thank you for all the time you spent with us trying to educate us and keeping us up to date on what's going on. I know that it can be really discouraging sometimes to have your uh, all your education and your wisdom questions, but uh, we need you, so uh, hang in there. Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your comment there at the end, uh, Chairman. Um, uh, I, I just really think that you're being a part of our team. Again, we've had a great team put together and we've needed every single one of you. And I know there's been a lot of stress on you, Dr. Cho, over the last few months. Um, I know it's not an easy job. Uh, just know that we really appreciate. Um, you can tell you, th- this means a lot to you as far as being at the center and helping us out and taking care of us and um, and it's a team effort, as you said, you've got a great team there and we've got a great team working on this. But uh, just personally and on behalf of the whole commission, thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hey, thank you, sir.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, wait. Commissioner Long.
I couldn't figure out how to get my hand to show. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was curious, Dr. Cho, if you plan to participate in our meeting on Tuesday.
Yes, I, I do plan to.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Get plenty of rest between now and then.
Will do.
Yes. All right, anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Human Services.
And Don is still on with Daisy Rodriguez. And Commissioner, just so I, you know, Don mentioned earlier, I'm sorry, Jim mentioned earlier Article Five. For those that don't know, Article Five is a summation. It's a, it's a reference to all court-related functions that we support. Um, and so it's an overview of all the various court functions, and that's a summary as a, as an attachment. So um, just so you know what that's referring to. Um, and, but uh, again, last up is um, Human Services with Don and Daisy.
Good morning. Okay, with me is going to be Kristen Kurt, Strategic Performance Management Analyst, to help um, provide some information on the performance measures. Uh, good morning, good morning, Kristen.
Good morning.
And also Daisy Rodriguez is with us, the Director of Human Services. Morning, Daisy. And Clark Scott, Human Services Business Services Division Director is also with us today. Good morning, Clark.
Good morning, Don. Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and share the screen again. I should be getting a little bit easier with this, but and can everybody see my screen?
Looks good.
Ah, yes.
I think your, I think your notes are up, Don, if you want to switch to your.
Sorry.
Yeah.
And.
There we go.
Is that better?
Yep.
All right, sorry about that. I need to move those over.
Okay.
Let me make this a little bit bigger and my apologies for that, and go ahead, Kristen.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's nice to see you again today as we wrap up our final BIS presentation. Once again, my name is Kristen Kurt and I'm with the Strategic Performance Management Team in LMB. I've had the pleasure to work with Daisy and her team over the last year, and in particular, have even learned from them on best practices and performance management. Over the last four years, Human Services has established a performance management system that allows them to monitor their contracts and grants and adjust as needed for each of their programs. As a team, their department reviews their performance measures and outcomes regularly. As a part of this year's budget development, we adjusted their budget book performance measures to report on more community-focused measures that assess the county as a whole. These are reflected in the backup attachments that you've received. As discussed with you in May, Human Services continues to make progress in finishing up the behavioral health elevation and will move into implementa- implementation upon final BCC approval. Both Human Services and a selected consultant assisting in this initiative, KPMG, are working on the development of a minimum data set that will, will improve reporting within the community. This may require an additional presentation to you once decisions are made regarding changes, changes to the current, their current contracts. Additionally, Human Services remains on target for their social action funding initiative as they are reviewing through 73 applications received and will provide recommendations to the board later this year. Moving into COVID-19 impacts, like most departments, Human Services has been on the front line to respond to COVID-19 within our community. Don, if you could please scroll down to the second page, I'd like to speak to Human Services' active role during this current activation, and then we'll discuss additional impacts as addressed on page one. During, during the early onset of the county's activation, Human Services worked diligently to stand up non-congregate sheltering to house homeless individuals and families. Who either tested positive but do not meet hospital admission criteria or whose results are pending and, pending, and they house them in local hotels. Pinellas County was the first county to receive approval from the state in FEMA in the southern region of the country, which is quite astounding and was really awesome to hear the state uh, commend Pinellas County for this endeavor and being the first example that served as a model for others throughout the state and the nation. As of Tuesday, June 16th, 39 individuals and one family has sheltered within the hotels. Human Services has also been very active, leading and participating in various working groups throughout the COVID-19 activation, including the Community Wellbeing Group, the Latino Working Group, the Faith-Based Organization Working Group, and the Behavioral Health Working Group. Their primary role was supporting the Behavioral Health Working Group, which focused on keeping providers up to date with information. Additionally, Human Services worked with marketing and communications to host Facebook Live events that educate the community on available services, resources available, and coping skills around behavioral health. The Directions of Living also established an emotional support line for the community. Those notes are not included in, in the presentation itself, but I wanted to add it just for some general understanding. Through this working group, a submit, a subcommittee was formed that continues to meet three times a week with acute care providers. This subcommittee designed a seamless transportation flow for clients, clients accessing care at freestanding crisis stabilization units to hospitals that also have these services. Finally, Human Services has seen a decline in requests for financial assistance in their Adult Emergency Financial Assistance Program as most cases were redirected to the CARES program as they were directly related to COVID-19 impacts, as indicated on page one. With an increase in CARES financial assistance claims, 28 staff from Human Services and Community Development were reassigned to review applications and administer funds for the program. Needless to say, they have done a lot in a short period of time. This concludes my section for performance impacts, and I appreciate the time that I've had with you over the last two days. And I will now hand it over to Don to discuss the budget.
Thank you, Kristen. Let's see. Revenues for the Human Services Department total, um, sorry, revenues for Human Services total $6.2 million. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Um, okay, let me let me get them here. Okay, sorry. Human Services Department expenditures totals $67.5 million, which is a net decrease of $1.4 million. The largest decreases were seen in the Pinellas County Health Program with a net decrease of $1.3 million or 4.4%. The decrease is a result of a reduction of in prescriptions, contract services, non-contract services, along with the reduction of four positions associated with that program. Then the next largest decrease was in emergency events with, with a decrease of $628,000. Uh, this is a result of the additional COVID-19 uh, grants that were received in FY20 with only one grant anticipated to carry forward into FY21. Juvenile detention had an increase of $302,000. However, this is, we're still waiting for the final bill from the state regarding that one. Right. Human Services also has the responsibility and oversight for the Drug and Beasts Trust Program. The Drug and Beasts Trust provides financial assistance grants for local qualified drug and beast treatment centers. Trust fund revenues are anticipated to have a small decrease of $4,670 totaling $41,940. Trust fund expenditures have a decrease of $13,000 or 24% from $53,000 to $40,000. In the past, there, we were trying, we, we had a large fund balance and we were giving out more grants to bring that balance down, and we are now matching the revenues with the expenditures. There are no anticipated changes in user fees. Um, some of the grants that, the new COVID-19 grants that have been received are listed here. Um, three of the four are related to homeless initiatives. Um, healthcare for the homeless, uh, the first one, the uh, Health Center Core Core, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Securities Act funding in the amount of $626,000. These funds may be used for the detection of coronavirus and the prevention, diagnosis, and treatment, including maintaining or increasing health center capacity and staffing levels. Um, the next grant in the amount of $58,000. Uh, the funds were, may be used for preventing, preparing for, and responding to coronavirus disease. Uh, the extending capacity for coronavirus grants. Uh, these funds may be used for the purchase, purchase and administer the extending capacity to monitor and suppress COVID-19. Um, finally, the last uh, funds received, the local facility, Pinellas Community Foundation, by $43,500. And that, those were used for temporary housing of indigent um, individuals that needed a place to stay for stability um, while they were awaiting test results. It's one of the uses. Human Services submitted two decision packages. Uh, the first request was for the creation of a street medicine team to provide basic behavioral healthcare to people experiencing homelessness, uh, no matter where they are. The, the medicine team is aimed at providing the outreach, case management, primary care, and behavioral health services to those that are not connected to uh, the facilities, normal facilities. These are the, the individuals that are living on the street, out in woods, um, and that are not accessing our normal healthcare support facilities. The second, the second request is to renovate an existing space to accommodate a venture lab um, at the St. Petersburg Department of Health location. Uh, the estimated one-time cost of this decision package is $60,000. And then this will provide additional capacity. Um, currently, the Department of Health has one venture lab at the B-Side Health Clinic location. Uh, this will provide a second location and expand capacity. Um, at this time, I'll turn it over to Daisy for additional comments.
Don, I have a question.
Sure.
Um, what did you say the cost was? I'm sorry, for the uh, street medicine team?
My apologies, I did not mention the cost. Okay, um, one, one moment.
I, I have that done.
Okay, sorry.
I have that.
Sounds like a great idea. I just wanted to.
Yeah, the, the estimated cost is $840,000.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a little over.
And so uh, Daisy, I also, and I just, Daisy, if you And so Daisy, I also, and I just, Daisy, if you can also talk about, there's been some updates regarding some of the decision packages and where you guys feel, and we haven't taken on decision packages yet, but I want you to address that as part of your presentation, if you would, Daisy, regarding how you want to work with hospitals.
Okay, so in regards to the street medicine, as Don said, you know, we're looking at the number of unsheltered, truly street homeless individuals based on the pit count is 720. As Don indicated, these would be individuals and, and who are truly in the woods, who would now not access healthcare by any means. You know, we do have the mobile medical unit, but that goes to the shelters and it goes to some of the soup kitchens. That's a. Funded program, this would be an extension of that, and what we're really looking for is an opportunity to engage those individuals into primary care, get them before they start utilizing the emergency rooms for much more severe conditions, as well as start doing some early intervention around behavioral health to start addressing some of that. Ultimately, the goal is to connect them to services, both primary care and behavioral health. It would be a team, a primary care team, working together with psychiatric nurse practitioner, a licensed clinical behavioral health specialist, so that they can do that holistic approach as a team and follow up with those individuals that are in those encampments and woods and otherwise places that, you know, where we would find them, right? And then connect them to services and see how we can, you know, mitigate them going to the emergency room, but more importantly, is really standardize some of the care and provide some of the care to them, meeting people where they are. And hopefully, you know, there's another, the other opportunity is to be able to get them into, into housing, right? And to connect them with the Homeless Leadership Alliance, and to connect them with rapid rehousing, and see how we can truly get people off the streets.
Wow, I love it. Okay. So would that be a vehicle like you have now, or just a team going out in a car?
What? Does call for a van, so it would not be like the mobile medical unit, so it would not be a full, you know, mobile medical suite. But they would be, they would require some transportation. We're also included in the budget is some cost for some basic medications, so antibiotics, antibiotic ointments and treatments, doing the ability to do diabetic testing. So really to address some of those primary care needs. We're also thinking about, and I don't know what the rules and regulations are around some of the behavioral health, or maybe some of the substance use in terms of providing individuals with substance use medications. I'm, I'm not sure about what that, those rules are, but it's something that we're definitely looking at and exploring as well, should this continue to go forward.
So you'd be working with police departments and street outreach teams and that sort of thing?
We would, we would, yes and, yes and no. So yes, we would be identifying through, through the street outreach teams and, and the police departments where those encampments are. But these would be the, the two teams really working together, trying to engage those individuals.
Right, sounds great. Well, and I've, I'm wondering, since it is, if this becomes an issue in the budget, it sounds like something that may fit under the Health Department millage, and maybe we could take a look at that.
Your thoughts are good on that. We, we are gonna have to look at this. The reason we put decision packages off is, these are all good things, but, you know, we also showed you the projections at the very beginning of the sustainability of, of some of our social programs and the overall budget amount. So we, we will, we're gonna put that all together, and we will look at things like, you know, capacity at the, in the, in the Health Department levy and some other things like that. But yeah, those are gonna come back in July. Daisy, I do want you to kind of tee up the opioid issue also.
Yeah, so if I may just, and, and thank you again for your time, I just wanted to have a few closing comments, if I may. I wanted to advise that the, you know, the staff has been working remotely, continues to do that, and it's, it's, there has been no disruption to any client services using the soft lines and, you know, the accessibility to the systems. We have been able to continue communication and follow up with clients as necessary, so there has been no negative impact to that. We continue collaborating with emergency management around sheltering, especially during hurricane season, and what this new potential could be, right? Continuing to work and co-facilitating with the different work groups, so we're continuing to be active partners in that, and identifying and working around the emerging needs. And we're continuing to work, as, as Kristin said, we've continued to work with KPMG to develop that minimum data set and that coordinated access model, so we anticipate getting that information along with some projected numbers in terms of cost back to you in July. And we have also started putting together an opioid intervention project design to address the opioid issues, fatalities, and overdoses in the county, and we expect to have that before the board in July as well.
So it's not just, so a couple of these items, the KPMG and the opioid issue, those came after the decision packages. So we have to incorporate those, look at those in, in the context of the overall funding, and also set a prioritization, you know, on what we can do. But I wanted you to be aware of that, those weren't reflected, but those will be coming, they'll be part of the presentation in July.
Okay, great.
And if I could just say that I really want to thank the Human Services staff. This has been an unprecedented time. They are truly a dedicated team, like all of the county teams, right? But, but we, we work with the actual human side of, of the element, you know, the, the emotional side. They've remained very, very fluid, we've had to pivot a number of times. And in my weekly message, I've always talked to them about, you know, I always send out motivational about how important it is during this time, really just to be able to change direction, really as difficult as it is sometimes, and even if it doesn't fit our picture necessarily, but we are addressing all of those emerging needs as they come up. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank you, Commissioners, for all of your continued support of the Human Services Department and, and the work that we put forward.
Thank you. I think you should include us on those encouraging messages every week.
Well, actually, I do, actually, we do have a e-connector, and we do a Word Cloud, and we do an ELT word for the week and define that, and we push that out on a weekly basis, so that we, I like to ensure that we're communicating anything that's going on on the county, especially since we're working remote, and, and it helps to keep us all tied together as one team working towards a uniform goal.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, thank you, Daisy, for that update. And I too wanted to say thank you to your group for all the work they've been doing during this, especially partnering closely with our two-on-one services on the residential CARES program. Which, that was, I had two questions. One, maybe a little update on that, not necessarily the numbers, but what's your take on if things are there? Because, you know, we're kind of in our own mind estimating a lot bigger need there. So where, what's going on there? What's the dynamic that we need to understand a little bit? And then the second question, and I didn't hear much about the veterans services that we're, we're providing. An update on that, are we, are we doing what we need to be doing for our veterans? Have you seen any changes in direction of services required? And, and then finally, thank you for providing some assistance and to the, to our Bay Pines Veteran Center down, down, down south. So anyway, the two comments about the CARES and then the Veterans Program.
Sure. So on the CARES, we continue to meet with two-on-one. We're meeting three times a week, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We have made a lot of changes in regards to process flow and looking at process improvement, how to reduce some of that documentation. I think we've made some good headway. We have created distinct emails for all of the workers now, so rather than it going into one email address, it's going directly to the people who are working on those cases. We are starting to see that the cases are moving a little bit faster. Again, part of the messaging and the real challenge is, is that folks have been sending in their documentation on kind of a one-off, piece-by-piece kind of thing, and it makes it a little bit more difficult and delays that process. But we continue to have that communication. I have reached out and, and shared information with several of the realty companies. There's the Bay Area Apartment Association to make sure that we got the information out to all of those owners so that they can go ahead and share that with people. But again, in terms of the two-on-one, I think we are making some progress, and we continue to look at process improvement.
Daisy, Daisy, on that, on that point, are we, in June came, are we approaching the folks from May and looking at adding in a second month? We're not talking about phase two, we're just talking about phase one extended. Are we allowing phase one people that we helped in the first month, the second month?
Yes, sir, we are. So if someone has an overdue bill that has now come in through June, and they don't need to submit any additional record documentation other than a new overdue bill for the month of June, and we are honoring those and making payment on that. In regards to, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
And I was just saying, regards to veteran services, I mean, Jeffrey has been manning the office. They too have been remote and have been able to continue servicing the, the veterans.
You don't see any change in trends or needs there? We're, we've got enough people to take care of our, our veterans' needs?
I have not been, none have been indicated, and I, you know, I meet with my ELT on a weekly basis. Oh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seal?
Thank you, I want to echo the comments of our most sincere thanks to you and your staff. The human element during all of this COVID crisis is so important and critical to everyone's well-being. So thank you to, again, to you and your staff for a terrific, terrific job. My question is back to the street medicine team. What did you say the budget request was for that?
The budget request is $840,609.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard, I just was. And I guess my question about that is, is this, are, what kind of data are we getting that the 720 folks are showing up in the ER rooms? I mean, what kind of documentation? I'm sure there's a need, but what do we have that documents that?
Yeah, and I don't know that I have the data that would make that direct correlation. What I do have is that there are 720, you know, street homeless people who have been identified through the pit count. But I don't have the data that would directly correlate that to the emergency room visits. That's something we can take a look at, see if we can get that.
Would you be trying to do this similar to, I hesitate because I, the high flyer system initiative, would you also be trying to find housing for them?
Yes.
All those wrapped around services?
So ideally, you know, the primary focus would be to connect them to clinical services, both primary care and behavioral healthcare. But while we have them as a captive audience, if you will, there's the opportunity to, again, to work with the street outreach team to get those people sped at it and evaluated, and to connect them into rapid reh, get them on the coordinated entry list and connect them to rapid rehousing, see how we might be able to help to move them along to get them into stabilized housing and self-sufficiency.
And thank you. The other question I had was the social action grants. You're reviewing the 73 applications now, when do you propose that they will come back for funding?
July, they will be coming back in July. We're, we're winding that up, and we'll, we'll put it together and submit the recommendations.
Okay, I guess July's gonna be pretty busy, huh?
It is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Peters?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this time to really thank and congratulate Daisy, Karen, and Lourdes on the work they do with KPMG. That was such a short timeframe, and they really pulled off a big challenge, and they did a really, really good job. And I just wanted to thank Barry for being really open-minded to the whole concept. And so I really appreciate it, and I really look forward to the implementation on this, because it's so needed. And, and just this week alone, I've seen how badly it's needed. I've gotten three different phone calls in two days on people who are in crisis and couldn't get help. So I really look forward to implementing this, and thank you for the commitment and your open-mindedness to it, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Daisy. Carry on. All right. I believe that's all we have, we don't have anything to say about the.
Now, Article V, that was just a summary. So that's just for informational purposes, gives you a summary of our court-related functions. We are working with the courts, we didn't really get into that regarding reopening. We coordinated, the sheriff is working with them in terms of temperature checks. We're gonna support them through PPE necessities and things like that, and, and allow that reopening to occur. Obviously, we're adjusting some of our internal programs as the, as this becomes, you know, more real and, and the, and the, and the case numbers continue to increase. We're looking internally at our own operating procedures and how to modify those, I'm meeting with our department heads next week regarding that. I didn't want, this is the last budget information session. We will have one more with the sheriff, I'm meeting with the sheriff next week. There were many issues, and we were both pretty busy, so we, we set up another meeting, and that's the reason we delayed their budget information session. So that'll be coming back to you. But I did want to thank the Commissioners for giving us the time to go through all these different budget meetings. It was real important for the budget, for you to see the work that the budget analysts are doing. They're working with the departments, both on a performance side and on a budget side. And you saw many of the departments that report to you, they're, they're coming in less than what they were before. And so they're really trying to be efficient with the dollars, efficient, efficient with developing outcomes and setting targets, and making sure we align our, our budget, you know, with our policies that, and priorities that we set. So you can see they're doing a lot of really good work. And normally, we get in talking to the department and, and forget about all of the numbers and the, and the performance and things that go on. So we switched it around a little bit, and I really want to thank all of our OMB staff for the work that they've done, putting this budget together, all the performance that they're working on, they're making great headway. We got a lot more work to do, but I'm really, really proud of the effort that they put into this and the presentations that they made. That's the first time, you know, that they, many of them have done a presentation like that. So really appreciate their work and, and time into doing that. So again, thank you all very much for this, we'll have one more with the sheriff, but we'll bring back the, the overall budget, the recommendations, the sheriff's piece to that, which is half the general fund, but, and, and, and wrap that up here in July.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Everybody have a nice weekend, and see you on Tuesday.
Great, thank you.